All right, Christina. Okay, 7:30 I'd like to call the meeting in order. Roll call William Johnston.
Yeah.
Thomas Graffanino.
Here.
Lynn Colligan.
Here.
Lisa Kreckeler.
Here.
Phil DiOrio here. And also present we have Stephen Kiley, Town Attorney via Zoom.
Good evening.
First order of business tonight is to review and approve the October 26, 2022 minutes. Wonder if I could have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have two applications tonight. The first is the Keller application of 56A Cartwright Road. Is there someone here to present for that?
No.
You, please, will you step up?
You're publicly noted.
Oh, sorry, Christina, I apologize.
Hearing and application of James and Cheryl Keller, owners of 56A North Cartwright Road, Shelter Island, New York, which is located in Zone C, near Fair O'Leary District, and more specifically described on a Suffolk County tax map as 700-A-3-67.2. The applicant is seeking variances from Shelter Island Town Code, Section 133-10B5B, to hold a 8.7 feet side yard setback on the southern property line, where 10 is required to construct a new floor addition. And additionally, to hold 8.4 feet side yard setback to southern property line, 10 is required for deck addition. Further, a special permit is required for bulk intrusion into the non-conforming area. No correspondence is required.
Hey, good evening. Matthew Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consulting. I'm here with Cheryl Keller, who's in the audience this evening, and Jim Keller, who's here by Zoom. Give you a real quick rundown on the project, and then if you have any questions for myself or the property owners, we'll be more happy to answer any of them. As Christina said, it's 56 North Cartwright Road. It's in C-zone, nearshore overlay. It's just under 2 acres. It's about 1.8 acres. The house its on-site was originally built in the early 50s. Three-bedroom, just over 1,400 square feet, single-family residence with two bedrooms. There is an accessory building that was built in the, like, 2012, and then a swimming pool that was built in 2021. The house, as it was built in the 50s, ranges from 10 feet from the property line to 8.9 feet from the property line. And then there's a deck that goes along the south side of the house that goes to just less than a foot from the property line. The septic is on the east side of the house, just about 34 feet from the on-site wetlands. And the site in the area of the house, which is one of the reasons why we're here for a variance, is only about 63, 63 and 1/2 feet wide where that house is. So if you've got the survey in front of you, you can see that it's a very narrow site, and it actually narrows right in the exact area where the house is. So any improvements to the house are pretty much forcing the property owners to go into some kind of a variance situation. What they're proposing is to expand the first floor of the house to a fairly minor degree, and then add a second floor. The second floor has been determined by the town to be at the minimus improvement. It's a very, very small intrusion into the setback, but we listed it on the ZBA application anyway, just so that everyone had a clear, complete understanding of what it is we were looking to have approved. The house footprint to the west expands about 3 and 1/2 feet. The expansion on the building with the additional first floor area and the new second floor allows it to go from three bedrooms, from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. The first floor, it goes from 10.1 feet from the property line at the furthest to 8.7 feet from the property line. And if you remember, the existing house goes from 10 feet to 8.9. So really, where it's at, 8.7 to 8.9 is the increase toward that side yard, that southerly property line. The area in the setback for the house goes from the existing 24 square feet, through on the proposed plan, it goes to 38 square feet. So we've got a 14-square-foot increase in footprint within the side yard setbacks. The deck setback for the deck on the water side of the house, a portion of the deck that we're going to be rebuilding and hopefully increasing a little bit, there is 10 square feet within the side yard setback now. It will be 20 square feet if the variance is approved. And then that deck that I was talking about before, that's just a little bit less than a foot from the southerly property line, that's 538 square feet of deck that's being taken out of the side yard setback, so completely being removed from the property. The second floor addition that was part of the project is 11 square feet total within the setback, and it ranges from 10.1 feet from the property line to 9.3 feet from the property line. You've got the existing survey as part of the application package, and you've also got a site plan that has a, just zoomed in, portion of the property that's the home, which is the property that we're looking at. And you can see we've color-coded it, so you can see what's proposed, what's existing, and what's coming out. So if the board has any questions from here for the property owners, that's the nutshell version of the project, we're more happy to answer anything that you've got.
Matt, what's the current height of the wall or the roof line there, you know, where you're proposing the second floor? How high is it now at the sort of the setback line there? How high is it going to be?
The eve, the existing eve is 11 and 1/2 feet over average grade, and the existing ridge is 18 feet over average grade. For the proposed, the eve goes from 11 and 1/2, the existing eve line stays where it is as it's being rebuilt. For the second floor addition, which is that on the west side of the building, the new eve line for the second floor is going to be 19 feet, and the new ridge line is going to be 26 and 1/2 feet. So that's the, that's that second floor, that the minimus second. The overhang on the existing is about 2 and 1/2 feet. The overhang on the proposed second floor addition is going to be about 2 feet on that overhang.
And the total of that second floor that's going to be in the setback is 11 square feet, and that's been determined to be a de minimis?
The area to the south, that property, because I know that the ZBA is conscious of not having somebody build something that's going to be looming over a neighbor's property, that wetlands that's just to the east of the house, there's nothing built to the south of the property line there. It's several hundred feet to the closest building. And then that wetland that's just to the east will prohibit anything from being built there because you'd be within the vegetative buffer, and the DEC and the Town Board regulate not allow a building or any type of improvement to be built in that area. So there's nothing there now for this building to be over top of, and unless the code changes, there's nothing that could be put there that this building would be looming over or impacting that way.
I mean, at some point, the neighboring lot could be subdivided, and someone could wind up with a lot that would be directly adjacent to where this house is. I mean, it's a possibility.
It is a possibility, but with that wetlands being there, that kind of protects that area from anybody trying to put a house or some other type of, you know, structural improvement in that area.
Anybody else have any other questions from Matt? No.
No change to any septic?
Yeah, we're going to be upgrading the septic. Right now, the septic is on the water side of the house.
Right, right.
It's, I think it's at 45 feet or less than that. Existing septic is 34 feet from the wetlands. It's going to be on the water side of the house, between the house and the garage. We're going to be replacing it with an IA system. So that would be good to handle the three-bedroom house and then the two-bedroom accessory building that's there now. And also, when this goes in front of the Town Board, assuming that the ZBA approves it, the septic will be part of that, also stormwater collection from roof gutters and leaders, and the typical kinds of mitigation that we would be looking for for a wetlands application as well.
Anyone else?
No.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else that wants to comment on this application? Have you seen any hand raised out in Zoom?
No.
Anything else at all on this application for anybody here? All right. I would like to start the next. Christina, what's it, 7th, is it? Or next?
7th.
Yeah, I just see they're going to include it there. Yeah, December 7th, so it would be.
You want a week or a day?
We'll say November 30th would be the close. All right, so I would like to get a motion to close this hearing, leaving it open to written correspondence until November 30. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So that's Lynn Colligan with the motion.
Yep.
Tom Graffanino with the second. We're going to have a roll call vote. William Johnston?
Yes.
Tom Graffanino?
Yes.
Lynn Colligan?
Yes.
Lisa Kreckeler?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Okay. Next application is 78 North Cartwright Road. And Christina, will you read the notice for that, please?
Hearing and application of Robert Pointon and Jane Azia, owner of 78 North Cartwright Road, Shelter Island, New York, which is Zone AA, near Fair O'Leary District, and is more specifically described on the Suffolk County tax map as 700-A-3-16. The applicant is seeking a variance from Shelter Island Town Code, Section 133-7B5B2, to hold a 15.2 feet side yard setback, where 30 is required to construct a 1 and 1/2-story accessory building with sleeping floors. There were two letters of support from Brenda and Robert, and Martin and Valerie Levenstein.
Hi. I have a few questions, so you can take a little longer. I'm Rob.
Please, yeah, please, hey.
This is my wife, Jane Azia. Thank you for hearing our application. We've been, had our house on 78 North Cartwright for about 11 years. We love Shelter Island, love the neighborhood. We have 3/4 of an acre on that 3/4 of the Zone AA in the nearshore overlay. On the 3/4 of an acre, there's a 118-year-old house with two small bedrooms, each about 11 feet to 12 feet. Adjacent to the house to the west, there's a pergola and a patio underneath the pergola. End of that, a fireplace, that's about at the edge of the building envelope by the west of the apartment. Behind the house, in the center of the buildable envelope, there's a 36-foot pool, and behind that, you know, pool seating area, also we have a patio style. There's a detached garage, now used as a pool house, and actually has a pool table in it. That was a joke by our people who sold it to us, but the reason why we're here is our family has grown. We have grandkids now, one grandchild, one on the way, and our kids and grandchildren visit, we don't have, you know, the adult role for people. Our plan is to replace the existing garage with a 1 and 1/2-story guest house. The upper story would be two bedrooms, also small, two bedrooms and a bath. Lower story would be a storage closet, a large storage closet for bicycles, for example, tools, a powder room, a kitchenette, no cooking facilities, and living area, table, chairs, and some seating. This new building would be on the same footprint as the garage, except it would be four feet longer to the north. Because of the bedrooms, we're in a 30-foot setback now with the new building, and so we need a 15-foot variance. It's going to be on the same line as the old building, which is 15 feet from the lot line. Need a 15-foot variance for the building and for the pool equipment and the AC equipment that will be located on the north side of the building. That's the sort of, that's the story. I could talk about how I think we measure up against the variance criteria, but whatever suits you. Want to ask questions? If you don't need that, it's all, whatever I would say is in the application.
The existing building is going to be completely demolished, and you're going to start from scratch on a new building?
Yes.
And is it going to be on a slab, or there'll be a basement?
There'll be a basement.
Okay.
What's the distance between the building and the pool?
16 feet. I went down and measured.
Okay.
You're thinking the same thing I'm thinking. Maybe we could move and move the building into the pool.
Yeah.
Did you explore any other options, like a completely different, more conforming place for this structure? And because since you're going to be demolishing completely, is it possible to build it somewhere else on the property?
We explored a ton of other options. We've been looking for a larger house to buy on the island for five years. We see nice houses, but nothing makes us want to leave where we are in terms of where we could build, and I also addressed the idea. We're narrow, we're not as narrow as the counters. But, you know, our building envelope is 40 feet, yeah, 40 feet wide, where the property's 100 feet wide. This middle of that buildable envelope is where the pool is and the patio behind the pool. It's also where the pergola is. The pergola and the patio underneath the pergola, which has a dining table on it, and the pool and the pool seating area are the most popular, frequently-used areas on the property. And to move them or, well, to move them or replace them with, you know, with condition would be, that wouldn't be worth it to us, really, to be losing as much as we gained. The front yard, we have plenty of room in the front yard. The house is 120 feet back from the street line. I think if we wanted a lot of neighbors to show up at this meeting objecting, we could propose to build in the front yard. You know, it would look, whatever it was, it would be thought to be like a McMansion. It wouldn't be in the neighborhood. That's not what it would be called, I think. It's, you probably know this corner, it's, you know, the intersection of North Cartwright and Willow Lane, just north of Hudson Avenue, and it's a beautiful corner, if I say so myself. And part of the reason is because our house is 120 feet back from the street, and so our front yard is a little bit like a park at the corner. And everything, you know, everything else about the corner is pretty, too. So that doesn't seem like a good idea for us or for the neighborhood. We also considered, you know, moving the house away from the lot line a little bit. Christina, can you pull up the four photos that I sent? The, you know, that didn't work out without mines, and there's a few reasons. This long, thin lot, the way that we use it, and, not the other one, the other email from that one. The way that we use it, it's, its big advantages are you have vistas to the south and you have vistas to the north. Here, we're looking from the pergola north to the pool, and what's behind the pool, there's woods behind our, well, Mrs. Von Erle, our neighbor to the east, her property curls around behind us for a little bit, but the trees you see in the distance are the old brush property. So when we're sitting in the pergola, which is about four hours a day in the summertime, we're looking this way. If you can switch to the other one, what we're seeing in the front, keep going.
This one. I got these and those in application?
No, I don't think so. You should have one.
Look at these five.
This way is, no, that one's good. Go back. This is looking from the seating area of the pool towards the house. What I'm, the part I'm getting at is the pool house and what would be the guest house, which is on the left in the foreground, that's already, you can see kind of in the view line. And every foot that we move it in this, with it in this picture, to the right, towards the pool, puts it more in the view line. If you move it more than really, I would say, looking at this, two or three feet, the pool house and the house are going to look like one larger unit, which we don't want it to look like, and I don't think would be consistent with the sort of ambiance of the site or of the neighborhood. So it would be a disadvantage to us to move it even a couple of feet, even though that sounds kind of ticky. But the other thing is, it doesn't do anything for anyone to move it a couple of feet because the neighbor to the east, which is to the left in this photo, can't see this pool house and won't be able to see the new house because of this very tall, very thick stand of bamboo. And what, you know, you can see, that yellow line is the roof line of the proposed new house, and this is looking east. What moving the house towards the pool would do, besides squeezing the property even more than it's already squeezed, it would actually, it would also take the house closer to the neighbors on the opposite side, who can, not very much, but much more than Mrs. Von Erle behind the house here, they can see the house. So it wouldn't be a big deal, but it wouldn't be great for them to have the house moved closer to them, but it's not, you know, there's no benefit to doing it for anyone, really. So you didn't want to do that. I can say really.
Anybody else have any other questions?
The only thing, I don't have a question, but usually when you've got a deck between my building, say it's a pool house, to your pool, usually a deck is usually right up to the edge of the pool. You don't have a grass strip, because if you get out of the pool, you're walking on grass, and you bring your grass on your, on your deck. If your deck was right against the pool, you get out of the pool, you're right on your deck. You're not working, walking on the grass. So if you move the building and the deck up to the pool, like normal people usually have, the deck against the pool, you'd get more room here.
I did.
Give us, you wouldn't need as much of a variance. That's.
Yeah, we understand the aesthetics and the ambiance. We have an appreciation for that, but it is a significant, a 15-foot variance is significant. So that's why we're trying to.
I understand that. I understand that. I don't really know what else to say. I, you know, in, in looking at the past variance applications and outcomes that seemed kind of comparable, I, I know that the board has granted, you know, larger than 15-foot variances, sometimes three different larger than 15-foot variances in the same application. I don't, you know, it's hard to really know the exact facts. It's hard to know what the property looked like in that situation, where the, you know, there's a million things you can know. But I, I think if you, if you think about how substantial the variance is, it's not just the feet, it's like, how, you know, how is it affecting people? And I don't think this is affecting people at all. If we can't do this, then we're not going to do anything, and there can be a pool house there where it is. So I guess I'm just asking, don't, don't make us move three feet because it makes the number lower, because it doesn't improve anything.
Okay, point taken. Anyone else?
I don't think so. What was your reasoning for adding a basement? Was it for structural purposes? Was it for space or?
Our house doesn't have a basement, and so we're kind of overflowing with stuff that should be stored in a basement. You know, we have kayaks and paddleboards and canoes, and more bicycles than can fit in our bicycle shed. When, in the wintertime, we put the outdoor furniture in the pool house, so there's no more playing pool, there's no more playing pool, all that stuff would go in the basement. Basement, the entrance to the basement would just be from outside, Bilco doors also on the north side of the house. Can I just say one other thing, which is, we've really tried hard to make this house small. It's 21, the proposed new house, it would be 21 feet high, lower than the existing house, can't see it from the street, can't see it from the side where the setback is implicated. And I think it would be, like, it would be, it would be fantastic for us, but I think it would be nice for, and not a detriment really to anyone.
Anybody else? No? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this application?
My wife wanted to say something, sorry.
Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Jane Azia, and I'm not going to, thank you for hearing me. I'm not going to make any kind of technical presentation. I just did want you to know that we love Shelter Island, we love the location of our house, and we never really expected, when we bought that house, we were empty nesters. We never expected that our children would love the house as much as we do, and that it would be, we didn't even foresee that grandchildren would be coming. And now it's sort of untenable, we can't even have our two sons and their wife and all our grandchildren there at one time. We really tried to make this a very modest house that's in keeping, that doesn't really alter the look of the, whatever it is, the pool house, the garage, it's going to be very, very modest, and really very conscious of that, and also keeping the front yard the way it is, which is really part of the great charm of our, our house, that when you turn the corner and you see this little house setback. So anyway, I just thank you for hearing us out and considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to comment on this? Please step up and state your name.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm Valerie Levenstein, and I'm the neighbor directly up the hill to the west of the, the west of this variance. In consideration of every time our house is sold, I hold our breath because who's going to come, and what are they going to knock down, and what are they going to build? And this family came and didn't do a thing. I kept saying, you're so wonderful, they haven't done a thing, they haven't asked for anything, they're not doing anything. They're very good neighbors, and they love, they love the neighborhood so much that they, they don't want to leave. They don't want to move from our neighborhood, they want to stay on the island. They're not going to buy some place on the, you know, in Silver Beach, right? They just want this place. And what, again, what they're considering is so modest compared to what people have given to do, and there's no impact. This variance is not impacting anyone. Now, I, you know, again, I know the Joey's consider, oh, if you give it to this one, then the next person's going to ask, but you've given so much to so many that you drive by and you say, oh, my God, what happened there?
I, I would just say one thing about that, that a lot of times people confuse, like, things.
You are bored with the others.
Right, that, you know, we don't do wetlands. We don't do oversized houses. We just do the area variances or perhaps a height variance.
Okay.
Or a special permit. So a lot of these things that, you know, people point the finger at the ZBA and say the ZBA has allowed this, never have even come to our board.
I'll take away my pointing finger. Please, this is in consideration of other variance you may have given, or what I just observed in my very own little neighborhood, over the 25-plus years that we've been there. This is nothing to what's been going, what has been done. So please, very good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment on this application? Anybody out in Zoom? Anybody out in Zoom land? No? All right, so I would like to close this hearing, leave it open to written comments until November 30th. Like to get a roll call vote to close the hearing. William Johnson?
Yes.
Tom Graffanino?
Yes.
Lynn Colligan?
Yes.
Lisa Kreckler?
Yes.
Sylvia O'Isle, vote yes as well. Right? That closes the hearings. And then we have one other bit of business here, and that is to review and hopefully approve our 2023 calendar. And have all of you taken a look at it? Everybody happy with it?
Yeah.
All right, so, what's that?
I'm going to make a motion?
Well, I have a motion to approve this calendar.
Yes, you may. I'll make a motion. So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'm going to say we're going to go without a roll call vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And last up, we need a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion. The meeting, Lisa Kreckler? Second? Oh, I had time.
Second who?
Tom Graffanino, second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Right.